I'm not ready. Okay, you're all set?
All right. Good evening and welcome to Monday, July 26th, meeting of the Select Board. If everyone could please provide roll call coming down the line.
Daniel, yeah. Three, three, four, roll call on the ground, Blake.
Mantrick, three, three, screen, Tom, go.
Lawrence Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive.
Jim Sikoshia, 21 James Henry Drive.
Andrew Dapp, Wednesday Point Road. And if everyone, please join me for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Next time we can show them my left side.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm Yeah, yeah. I saw you, Tony.
So, looking at the agenda for review and approval with the town administrators' report, we have the public hearings and the consent agenda. Is anyone satisfied with the consent agenda or do we?
I got a question about the about the holidays. So do we want to pull that one off the consent agenda? That would be appropriate. We can put it under new business.
Want to get on the boat? Hold it.
Not.
I'll too.
Holiday.
And I have one item just to inform the board on the minutes, which I would hope would stay on the consent agenda. There was one adjustment. Mr. Mantrick was listed as a no vote on the acceptance of the ARP funds and that was in error. So that has been corrected and will be reflected in the minutes. Should they be approved?
Is everyone good with that?
I am. Yes. Okay. I have one thing, please.
To, would they regard to the consent agenda?
Well, I just I have an article that's not on the consent agenda. It's not on our regular meetings. It was scheduled over for last meetings.
So you're looking to pull it into, is it from old business or new business?
It would become old business now.
Okay, what is the
The discussion of the provided school board and the industrial obsession.
I believe that's in the school board's hands currently.
That's what's there right there, so that's why I didn't make tonight.
Right, there's no new information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything?
And the other thing is that I talked about font size. And after I just got the last work here for the two public hearings, I really wish somebody would give consideration to that so we can have stuff with a larger scale makes it easier for me to read them about anybody else.
I'll second that, because I had issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So is everybody satisfied with the consent agenda at this point? Okay. So I'm gonna hop forward just to I guess I'll leave it at this. So we've reviewed the agenda, approval, vote?
We'll accept the agenda.
Second it.
Hi.
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 Sikoshia. Now, bye. All right. Public hearing, issuance of a building permit for Longshore Drive for Matthew, and I'm gonna apologize. Caston.
Caston.
Caston Blake, okay. For map 101 lot 56. Board discussion. Any?
Is everyone Yeah, I'm sorry.
I could not see his
Sorry. Work up. This is one of those that have doesn't doesn't maintain the standards. This is a variant. Worked at a variant, although these are very non-conforming lots up there. It would be very difficult for conforming houses in there. But it's just kind of it's just beginning of variance that I think. This one probably is appropriate, although it's one of the butters' object. Do it. But again, we're gonna run into this on some of these old lots that were put in this barely it's over a third of an acre. It's actually a double lot. So there are a whole bunch of in that area that are less than a third of an acre. Be difficult. First of all, that doesn't make it standard.
Oh, uh.
Yeah, I mean, this is a way to clean them up, right?
The audience, are you on a wish to fix that with?
Sorry.
I just wanna make sure we're all having discussion if somebody came here just let us know and try and be louder. All right. No, that's okay. So
Well, David, were you done? Yeah.
Mr. Sikoshia, do you have something on that? I'm good. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. The only objection I find with this here is just the the distance between the house and the road there. Set back there. That's the only one that I would have concern about. Because if you look at the, and follow it back on there, the did show how it would do with the angles of the property lines, I mean, aside, you'll see that it finishes out. I can't see any other place of it. Also, making note that this is a a lot of brackets, so
Yes.
So we're stuck, kinda stuck with it.
Yep, and I believe the appeal that was filed on it ended up not
It was rejected.
Here, it was not accepted, it was rejected.
I would point out that if you look along that road, there are a whole bunch of houses that are within 20 feet of the road somewhere even close to all along. They've been here for a long time.
Slight person there. Well, if you go back to the day when they were created, that probably meant something.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. Plus. I'm angry.
Very good.
So it came before the planning board, we had a lot of discussion, obviously trying to make sure that we get it as close to conforming and compliant as possible and that it meets the appropriate setbacks for the wells and septic radius, which it does. Also making sure that the grades are reasonable and acceptable or as close to reasonable and acceptable as can be along the sideline. I know there's a pretty steep drop off where the septic field comes off on the side of that property. It, there's a fair amount of contour in there. There was a pretty lengthy discussion around that with the planning board, but knowing it had been before this EPA and kind of where everything was, the board seemed comfortable with moving it forward to the Select Board, having that it meets all the conditions laid out by the road agent. The review that was completed by the police.
It makes sense to me that, you know, they're doing everything they can to try and make it as close to town specs as they can. And it's gonna be another house that's going up that's more tax revenue for the town, so.
I think the comment that I would say in general is if you look at Berry River and Longshore Road, there's, that road association has done a lot to fix the road and in general the properties on that road have come up significantly over the last five years.
Good work.
Are dramatically
Correct. I have, that, don't, I think you said, I agree with everything.
I was just gonna say there's fairly complex request, road aging. A lot of work with road aging.
Yeah. Slight person there.
That's right in there. We had to, so, the president, so, he was turning back, so he had going into the road. There he got to a head of the process.
I would like to make a motion to authorize
Excuse me, sorry, you just had to open and close. Thank you. Sergeant.
Is every discussion? Open public comment for the issuance of a building permit to Matthew Caston Quick.
Caston Way.
Caston Way. Map 101 lot 56.
If anybody is participating virtually and would like to speak up, you can raise your hand or enter a chat in the comment box. If you're on your phone, you need to press star six to un-mute yourself and wait to be called on by the chair. Man, if you'd like to make a comment, step up here. Give me one moment. Roberta Peggitt. Yep, just give me one moment. Turn the camera on for you and the microphone that's gonna pick you up is right over here.
And I know you started, you just wanted to do your your name and your address and address your comments and board.
Hi, I'm Roberta Peggitt. I'm the butter and I'm complaining quite a bit about this. The adjacent lot with this, I believe it's a colonial that's going in. That lot is very, very small. That house was terrible mine. I've been there 36 years. I see where the driveway is going basically top of my access point to my backyard, my home access. So 36 years ago, I think there was 12 houses on that. Now they're filling them in like hot kids handing out bearings, it's like their Halloween kid. I'm really worried about that front setback of 20 feet. But it's roads very narrow. It's gonna be right on top of access drive. And then my leach field is alongside there. Property lot. I'm really scared because my house was built on a bowl half my house. If they start drilling, excavating, I just had my house redone. I can see the sheeting aren't going, splitting. I don't know why they can't move the house further towards the other side of my home. You know, my well, worried about that, the quality of the water, once they start drilling or excavating. I worry about my privacy. I just, we just had a house going across the street. When they looked at that lot 56, they were told by the unit that it was unbilled. So they had to get a lot across the street, 700 a film dump truck fill. They had to do, so I felt bad for them. It's mostly about my privacy and having a huge house on top of mine. So I hope you guys can understand, I was hoping some of it come out, look at that lot, see how close it's getting to the house. And if anyone would be redone, they would be here like I'm. So if you take a second and third look, just be fair to the people who that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I do understand that, just so you know, if they do any blasting, one of the pieces that they will do is a site survey. Usually what they do is come into any abutting neighbors and
Well, yeah, they keep on you.
They, they will come in, survey the house and they look for any cracks, anything that would create a structural deficiency or anything else from a blasting end so that they don't, they don't create damage to your property because there is recourse, I guess, so to speak, with the blaster at the time when that's done.
Slight person Sikoshia. Can I ask a question?
You may.
Have you reached out to the future potential builders of the project or the people themselves? And have you expressed your concerns to them?
If you're speaking about the surveyors.
Not the surveyors, but the people who are ultimately gonna live there.
I don't know who they are, I've never seen them, never been introduced to them.
Well, I think we can all look up the tax map and know who's, you know, we got it right here. I'm sure we can get some information to get you in contact with them and and maybe it's something as easy as you guys having a conversation. Maybe them reassuring you and saying something like, Andy, being like, hey, yeah, you know, we're gonna do everything proper and, you know, because ultimately they're moving in with you, this is a neighborhood, this isn't like, you know, we're claiming stakes in here and it's whether you like it or not, ultimately we're here because we like the town and, you know, we have to learn to love the neighbors around us and get along. That's what a neighborhood's about. You know, getting that village to grow those kids, be great people in the community, I mean, that's what Barrington's all about, so.
I'm sure you can understand my point. That's a very long line. I don't see why they couldn't put a driveway further down.
And that's a discussion you can have with them and, you know, I would go into it, open-minded, not asking demands, but hey, guys, maybe here are some of my concerns.
Yes, this is why I'm here, this is why I'm trying to, you know, write letters and I wish you guys could understand. Got nothing.
Slight person there.
Jim, I didn't hear your concerns, so. Yours too, but basically the surveyor is why they're gonna mention setbacks and some, so it falls on there how they can make it work, just over the, well, it's moving, it goes out of them. The distances and stuff, I gotta go for variance and we must be reasonable. And it's this I know, I know your concerns, I too, I've run into but basically too, someone owns that land, they have a right to it. So you could have, might have opted to buy it, who they have, then you could have done whatever you want with it. So people have rights to them. I understand your concern and all that, but people have rights to it.
I understand, yeah.
And when they, when they do any blasts, they will put a sensor ring onto your family. And then if it goes over a certain estimate, well, they raid it. There's no, there's, there'll be no damage. They walk, so they have to fire a report with the state and everything.
Yeah.
And I also think so much chalk wouldn't tolerance if it goes over a certain point.
I mean, even the big trucks that come down that road might have shakes. It's a bad road, it's full of potholes, it's narrow, so in the wintertime, the snow is pushed on all our properties. So their front setback, it's gonna be kind of heated with snow, so. That's a concern for them. Numbness to me. I still think that it's gonna devalue my home because it's a private, well, I moved out there for privacy to raise my three children. No one's gonna wanna buy my house with a colonial tower in the public. I, that's my feeling.
To be honest with you and coming from somebody who's in the trades and in the real estate market, if you wanted to sell it, somebody would probably come and buy it and they could probably do the same thing that the neighbor who's wants to build a house because they wanna be close to that property. They, they obviously have a love for the land and they wanna be around here, so. It's not about, you know, because, you know, and I know you mentioned you really love it here, you've been here for a long time, so I mean, you should, you know, maybe try to embrace some new people coming in and talk to them into their design and being like, hey, maybe one less window on this side. But like Dan said, people have
Or offense.
And it's all up to you, but like Dan said, you know, people bought the property and they have the right to do it and you probably could have bought the property or I just
I didn't even know it was Sam.
Yeah.
You know, I don't have a computer. I'm lucky just to have a local cell. I had no idea what was going on this whole time.
I'm sorry about that.
Before I found out.
I didn't know it was just alien, so you get on alone.
Appreciate that.
There's somebody with last name Aquendo with public comments as well. Do you have anything else? Do whatever, you're good.
Thank you.
The individual by the name.
Yeah, sorry about the mic here, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
You know, I, I, you know, to, to you guys' point have, you know, had confidence in the system and how we do things and the fact that we set up rules and regulations.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Aquendo, if you could stop giving your name and your address.
Apologies, Benjamin Oquendo. I'm next door, 108 Longshore Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You know, we, we talk about a sense of community and people's rights and rules and, and, you know, neighborhood and stuff like that. That kinda had confidence in the fact that we had rules and regulations already set and put in place. But apparently that doesn't matter as long as it's reasonable and within some arbitrary standard or close enough to being reasonable. That's never actually reasonable, right? We, we set up the rules and the regulations in, in place so that we don't run into these issues so that people can maintain confidence over what they have in the system that we have in place so that they could have that privacy. And it sounds to me more like we're setting a precedent of being able to bend those rules so that we could take all these little lots that we have on this road and do whatever we want with them. Take advantage of the fact that you can take a small piece of land, throw, you know, a ridiculous structure on it and, 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 and make a whole lot of money. If you guys really cared about the community, you'd take some of those lots that are in pretty bad shape and flip those, but of course, the profit wouldn't be so great. You know, you talk about taxes, I, I just, I don't see you guys collecting an arm and leg in taxes off of that very small, like you said, a third of an acre. What are you gonna collect then that you're not already, you know, it's not really gonna benefit the association, extra $500. So like, these are things that run to my head and I'm like, you know, and I'm not trying to be rude or anything or condescending or anything like that, but I'm like, well, no, it, it's not really adding up, right? It's not really adding up this sense of community, this sense of, you know, being able to collect tax, that, that's not what it's about. It's about, you know, being able to flip a small piece of property, bending the rules how we wanna bend them. And if you set the precedent now, you can do it across the whole road, right? And I think what people really enjoy here and what really makes us a sense of community is the fact that we have that privacy. My biggest concern is that it's too big for that area. And it's just how I feel, I, I, you know, what do you guys have to say on, on those things?
So let me start at the beginning if I if I got everything correctly. To be clear, we're not bending the rules, the individual purchased a lot. They took the lot that they had purchased, created a site plan for it, went before the zoning relief, they achieved relief for that. It went before the planning board, the zoning office and the building committee or the zoning committee, and then it came to our board for approval regarding access on the road, because that's ultimately what the Select Board is issuing, is approval of access to the road. The planning and zoning handles the building and the building permit end of it. So taking other lots and selling them or I guess more money is how you put it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. We don't have the right to take anyone's property or dictate how they use their property if it is within the confines of the zoning law. And Mr. Chair, on that point, if you don't mind, even later on the agenda, the Select Board occasionally does have the opportunity with the tax-deeded properties when the town acquires property. And in that specific area, the Select Board has taken every opportunity to enlarge the size of those lots by offering tax-deeded properties directly to abutters with the requirement that they're merged for the purpose of creating larger lots. So the chair is right, the, the town doesn't have the ability to transact real estate on those, on those roads, but when the opportunity does present itself, the Select Board has historically taken the opportunity to create larger ones.
It is, yes, as long as somebody has, an abutter has an interest in purchasing the larger lot, right? And is, is there anything that I'm missing that you had raised? And Mr. Aquendo, you have to unmute yourself again.
No, I think those are all very good points.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying, by the way.
Welcome. Thanks, guys. I caught a statement, the town's land has spent hours, one hour, going over it out there, spending time out there approaching abutters and that's, that's the first step, to go to abutters first. And then look at the best inches of town. Oh, Senator auction or, yeah, Richard Greenway.
There, are there any other public comments? So hearing no other public comment, no close public comment. Is there a motion for the issuance of a building permit on Longshore Drive? Anyone making a motion?
I won't. So we have to make a motion.
Yeah.
To see if it goes through.
Well.
So I'm gonna make the motion to see if the board votes it through, so I would like to make a motion to authorize the assurance of a building permit for map 101 lot 56 with the condition indicated. Conditions.
That's my apologies.
I'll second that. You don't have
With the conditions noted from department heads.
Alright. There I
Mantrick, no?
I think we know.
Sikoshia. Now, bye. Alright. Waiting for it. Issue.
Yes, another public hearing.
Sir. We have another public hearing for the issuance of a building permit on Mary Hill Road to take access from Marsh Road, it is a class six road for Matthews Rogers, Matthew Rogers, map 117 lot 46. Slight person there.
I think that's my, my family's comment, that would have been better, was so much attention on it, so. So, quick glance at it, I thought it was within the wide area of the road, so I physically went out and looked at it, saw what's going. Totally different, needs to be upgraded, the road. And what access it going through.
Which mark, A, are you talking about Mary Hill Road?
Yeah. Going down Marsh Road, so I'm looking at this quickly. Even though I thought it was with the, with the, that, that was done years ago. So I physically went out there, so I was totally, it's
Beyond where the access point is?
Right.
Beyond where it's been upgraded previously.
Upgraded too. So the road needs to go, it's upgraded, raised off the right, and this lot is long.
Right, but they're taking access toward the front of the lot and then creating a drive that comes up.
Yeah, well, it's kind of frontage, kind of, on the front of, on Mary Hill Road. Size is so long in there. But the road doesn't have to be upgraded.
I think the entrance, though, is on Marsh.
That is.
Right, right.
They're, they're asking for the entrance beyond Marsh Road. Currently, the, the wetlands and everything else on the street address is not conducive.
And I will note, just for the public record, I shared with the board, there's one additional condition which I neglected to include in my report. And it's pursued to the fire code, Marsh Road must be upgraded 20 feet wide up to the entrance to the driveway or the resident can install a qualifying residential sprinkler system. So if the board makes a motion to issue this building permit, I would ask that that condition be included in the list.
And there was a lot of discussion on this at the planning board that the the access, the, the reason that they're not taking access off Mary Hill Road is because the, all of the frontage on Mary Hill Road, road is extraordinarily wet. And they're going to a high spot that sits back in on this lot, so coming in off Marsh Road and then coming in kind of creating a sweeping driveway that can see an uphill hill and then coming in, kind of creating a sweeping driveway that can see an uphill hill, created the opportunity for them to have a nice manageable driveway open space.
Chairman, how many feet is that?
The driveway?
You know, the, the distance from, uh, from, uh,
Marsh, Marsh.
There we go. How, how far up Marsh Road were they going to go?
It, it's before you hit the wetlands portion of the road there.
Way up, way up here.
It, it's down farther than that. And so there's a, it, it comes in down below that and then comes in down below that and then loops up here into the high spot.
Just after lot 48, 48 even?
No. It's right there. There's that big lot. So they upgraded going to this big lot. He's got to be right there.
Okay, that's, that's on 47. And yeah, right here. Okay. I, yeah, yeah. Maybe add something to what was said? Or it's going to come up as on the width of the road?
Yep, 20 feet.
And, and if I, if I may address that 20 feet, I appreciate that.
You bet.
Thank you. This, uh, the latest policy for the select board, the select regarding construction of the plastics and private roads, issuing a building permit that turns around on. And we get something. And we are on page three. Item four B, uh, on the second paragraph, it says that the road shall have a, the road shall have a 16-foot travel surface with two two-foot shoulders on either side of the road. That was, something was put into our policy and what have you. And, uh, with the safety issue that I, that I was made aware of, uh, to the fire chief, what have you. So does that mean instead of the 16 foot, it should be 20 foot plus the two foot shoulders on either side of the road? Or is it 16 feet with the two?
16 feet with two.
With two shoulders. Thank you. That's okay.
Select person air.
I feel we should prefer to a 16 feet of travel and two two-foot shoulders because people get confused. It's 20 feet. It adds up 20 feet, but it's, right, it's stayed everywhere. 16 feet of travel with two shoulders.
Good. Since the roadway discussed, someone else was going to fix it. Is that a different road? A couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago?
I don't know which road you're talking about, but it wasn't.
Probably ours. And that's when they were, this one in the next page.
Yeah. Okay.
Hold on. Uh, is there any more discussion from the board? Yeah, hearing none from the board. I'd like to open the public hearing for the issuance of a building permit for map 117 lot 46.
Uh, I see one hand up electronically. And I'll just remind anybody else that if you'd like to put your hand up or unmute yourself, uh, and wait for the chair to call on you, we can address your comments virtually. Uh, and I have Mr. Brian Shea when you're ready. Mr. Shea, floor is yours.
Hi, Brian Shea, 86 Mary Hill Road. I'm a property butter of, uh, Mr. Rogers. Do you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, just a couple of questions that I need, I'd like to clarify. Uh, this lot very narrow and it abuts my property. Um, what are the setbacks? How close will it be to my lot?
Lot.
My lot is also in a tree farm, uh, current, current use and tree farm use. Uh, part of the stewardship program. So I'm curious to see how that will affect my, my forest. Um, also, it's very, very wet all around this area.
Yeah.
How will the septic system?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can address some of those questions.
Sure. I was just trying to make sure I have the notable.
Great. So Mr. Shea, um, first, the setback to your property is showing a 60 feet on the proposed plan. Um, and I will note, if you're interested, which it sounds like you might be, um, the plan and, and all backup information is available on the town's website. Uh, you can go to the calendar, might be the fastest thing, and find the town administrator's report. Um, and you can see the plan, all backup documentation. Um, as comment about the septic system, the proposed septic system is reviewed and approved by Department Environmental Services, uh, which takes into account property boundaries, uh, other supporting infrastructure like nearby wells and septic systems. Uh, and so that information is available in the packet as well, uh, and in the building office. But again, uh, that portion of this review is handled by the state.
So, um, so we setback, we didn't actually answer his question. He asked what the setback.
60 feet.
No, no.
Oh, excuse me. I apologize. I thought he was wondering what the setback was.
His current setback is 60 feet. He was asking, I believe, what the town setback is for it. Um, and select person air.
I'll comment both. It's 30 feet per side where setbacks. And then the state allows a septic within 10 feet of property line. But that, like, that's a little bit 30 feet.
Right. And then the other comment that I believe you had was around the, uh, the property being rather wet and the wetlands. And, uh, that was one of the areas that we discussed, that this was, uh, a null here and was the, at the planning board meeting, that this was the, um, I guess the high dry spot on the property that was most, that was best suited for a residence. And there was a question in there regarding a tree farm. And I apologize, I, I, I don't know exactly what that question was.
Uh, yeah. So I was just, just curious, my property is in forestry ship, certified tree farm. And most of that for future timber harvests, I don't know, uh, how that would impact my situation.
It, that shouldn't have, it shouldn't have any impact on your property since it's your private property.
Okay.
And then they come from conservation and they had no concern. And they realized how wet it was. And then, then if I did, they wanted.
Are there any other questions?
Public comments.
You don't see anybody else.
No, so just to clarify, so the, the setback is 60 feet.
30 and then 1,000 and 60.
The, the town setback is 30 feet. The house will be 60 feet back from the property.
From, from my property.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I do not see any other comments coming through electronically. Seeing no other public comments, I will close the public comment section. Looking, is there a motion?
I have a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the issuance of a building permit for, uh, map 117 lot 46. With the, with the, with the conditions as stated, uh, on the attached, uh, town administrator's report.
Including the one I added, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, that's, 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 that's on your report because it was already been amended. I had to put that in.
Thank you.
Secosa second.
So we'll call go.
Air, I. Antrick, I.
Bailey, I. Secosa.
Now, bye.
Consent agenda, which we, I know we approve a consent agenda July 26th.
Secosa second.
Through E last D. Then you remove.
Okay. We'll call go.
Air, I.
I.
Bailey, Secosa.
Now, bye.
Uh, we have no appointments. I would comment. This is the first of two public comments.
If anybody would like to make a comment, uh, virtually, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. Wait to be recognized by the chair. Start by introducing yourself and providing your address. Give it 15, 20 seconds.
Here, seeing we have no requests for public comment. We will close public comment. Staff reports. Administrator Mckay.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I have included in my town administrator report the, um, July work anniversaries. Actually, I'm looking. I actually didn't. The July work anniversary is the same as the ones presented on July 12th. Read through them then. Um, I'll be sure not to admit, let that mistake happen again. Um, the second note in, uh, that I wanted to provide a copy to the board, uh, just for advanced planning purposes, is I included a copy of the 2021, 2022 budget calendar. Uh, obviously, we're a couple of months from the start of the process. Uh, about two months from now, the budget process will start on September 27th. Um, department heads and myself have already started, uh, putting materials together, reviewing numbers. Uh, we have, uh, the second quarter financial analysis later on the agenda tonight. Um, so the purpose of this calendar is twofold. One, you should know when the select board meetings are, but they're listed on here. Uh, the advisory budget committee meetings are listed on here as well. Uh, but importantly, in the bottom third of the page, you can see, uh, the order of presentations, the order of budgets that we will be reviewing. Uh, and the information to participate in the meetings is also found below, uh, at the bottom as well. Uh, so happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to give this to you folks, uh, as soon as it was prepared, so you could hang it on your wall and be prepared for, uh, another fun and exciting budget, budget process. And that's all I have.
So this is a Christmas.
No, Christmas comes when you review everybody's budget. Yes. The budget should not be a Christmas.
Oh, all right. Um, municipal office administrator call.
I have the two preachers.
Very good. I know I would have signed them earlier today. Underworld Business, 2021 land sale. Select person air.
I got, I, I think it crux need to be paid.
What's the correction?
Um, this 20 acre number willing to pay the 49, bye. That's wrong.
Hang on a second. I know we're back up.
I'll land, we're doing land sales, right?
Mr. Air, in my report, it says no one was willing to pay the price at the time. And then it says since last year, one of butter has expressed a willingness to pay.
Right.
So that is contemplated.
All right, and? The consultation agrees with it. The town leaders, everything. As, 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 as. Better I say it. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, what I'm looking for tonight, uh, this is the, a pretty much carbon copy process as we followed last year. The lands committee, as Dan has mentioned, and I know I've mentioned before, spent a lot of time on this. Uh, additionally, I, uh, I sent this list to department heads and the conservation commission. Uh, the only additional recommendation, which was identified in here, uh, which staff in the conservation commission supported, which was retaining the two lots on Orchard Hill Road for now. Um, that's at an intersection and that may be valuable if the road is ever upgraded in the future. Uh, they're not immediately buildable lots. Uh, so the, uh, folks recommended that the town, similar to what we're doing out on, uh, old settlers, uh, do the same on Orchard Hill. Uh, and most and all of these properties that we're looking to transact by sale are recommended to go to a butter's first. Uh, so we're looking for authorization to start that process. Uh, and there are six properties that are recommended to offer to other agencies. Sell fishing game and the department transportation. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any questions on the recommendations, but this has been a process that started the end of last year. Uh, and it has gone through multiple reviews.
So the list of properties that we're talking about offering to sell fishing game in New Hampshire DOT?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if I missed that, but here.
Yeah, so the self properties are landlocked properties within the self, uh, forest, uh, the Stonehouse Forest. Um, so there's one large landlocked, uh, lot on Marsh Road, middle of Marsh Road. Um, and then there's two other lots, um, down in the, what would be the southwestern part of the Stonehouse Forest, which are landlocked as well. Um, and the lands committee felt that there was, they were of no value to anybody other than self, uh, and recommended transferring them to self, low cost to the town.
I didn't believe those were landlocked. I thought they, they abutted, uh, the, the road.
That's right.
The one that's on Marsh Road. Yep, I mentioned that.
Yeah, we, we, we did that, Mr. Chairman. We said we were going to keep those two.
Right.
We said we weren't going to give those up right there. We, we, we were going to keep them for future use.
We had to do that a while ago that we weren't doing that.
That's right.
That was too hard.
We still, we still.
I clarify that.
What do you want to clarify?
There is one on 202, quarter rate gap that we're going to keep. There's some in the middle that they're the landlord. And there's, uh, 22 that there is a butter interested in it. It's just one of the pay the, uh, full rate. A taxes due. So it's very clear that if the cell wants it, they, they, they have to pick up all the expensive structure job. They are landlocked.
But I don't believe they're landlocked. There is a road, there's a road through that area and all property.
There's only one that abuts. These ones are landlocked.
Only, only one is on Marsh Road. But you're right, Mr. Now. And the, and the select board did previously ask to retain that.
Right.
What I, all's I'm presenting is what the lands committees recommend. The select board is certainly within their right to adjust the recommendations. I'll pull up that one lot that we're talking about. As one that I want.
We've spent so much time on those two lots that we're going to retain them. The road that goes through there maybe it is not serviceable, but when it comes to the fork that's down the bottom, that's where it ends. So if you commit the other end, you come as far as that. Now you come down from 202 and you come down and go through the gate, everything else to get the other side, it stops right there. But they still are accessible by the road.
Right. And we made a commitment to not only, um, our, is a select board, but to the police chief and the fire chief that we would not abandon or give up our right to that road.
And you still retain the right to the road.
I understand, but why would I give up a lot that's right in the middle of a, of a potential road at some point?
Right. Because all of these lots, the recommendation of the lands committee is that all of these lots are owned by Southeast Land Trust and in conservation.
That one right there.
But I don't know why the lands committee brought those two lots up when they were already property of the town. We said that the select board has already voted not to give them up. I don't know why they brought them back up again. Or the conservation.
I'm happy to tell you. So, uh, in 2018, the Supreme Court reviewed, uh, the statutory requirements of a municipality for tax-deeded property of, of which this is one. And what the Supreme Court said is that the statutes as written are unconstitutional and constitute unconstitutional taking. So what that means is a municipality has a duty to the former owner, whether we sell it or keep it after three years, to provide the former owner with the difference of market value and what was owed at the time of taking. And so that facilitated the lands committee to review all property that the town owns, uh, in order to determine if it's worth the town's investment to essentially buy off the rights of the former owner of the difference of fair market value and the, uh, and what was owed at the time of taking. And so they've, uh, reviewed all town properties, uh, including this one. They were aware of the board's previous actions, um, and that they made a recommendation contrary to that. That doesn't mean the select board has to support it. But that's the reason they reviewed it.
So what was the cost?
The cost to what?
To the other individuals that were prior, prior owners of the property for the tax.
We have to research that information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm so used to these ZBA. I apologize. I get caught up in this. My fifth or sixth time I've done. I'm sorry.
Select just a minute.
I, I realize, again, two deliberating sessions ago, I was there and, and we wanted to repaint this lot to the town, but I could never quite figure out why. And I guess ideally, if since we own it, because of the town hall there, it's been really cheap, wouldn't have been accessible to pay. What else is there to do with this land is what I'm curious about.
Well, recreational.
Let's sell. Okay. Sell. I just don't see what the town would do with that. Recreation, self-recreation.
What was discussed on that there, the chair hit on it, but didn't finish, was the fact that eventually with the way the town was developed through the years, and we, and it was brought up by, uh, Chief Walker, and it was brought up that sometime this would be used as a pass-through road. Eventually it would be developed with us only that aspect of it. We would still maintain control of it. We could have it as a crossroad if, if the town ever had the money to do it or wanted to do it. Giving up those two pieces would prohibit us from turning around. Giving up those two pieces would prohibit us from turning around and having that road all the way through like it is. And that was part of the reason why we did this. Chief Walker kept us here longer than I wanted to that night, but anyway, we turned around and we voted on it for free. That's why we have it that way. So that was the whole reason why. And I can understand why, you know.
I agree.
No, because no, it, it's a road we, we would eventually use to cut through. It went side. It would help with the fire protection and eventually the police would find the road. It'd be better be that way. The police would use the road to that way.
But getting rid of this piece of land doesn't mean we have to give up the road.
Correct. Yes.
Select person air.
Senator, what's any more time on the next town lands committee? I will clarify upon us when time looking at me out here. I'll give everything all broken down and report.
I guess my only comment is I look at it and I'm like, okay, great. There are all these recommendations, but it's just nice when it's clarified out what the maps and lot numbers are.
I will clarify all that.
No, that's in there. And so you'll remember a couple of meetings ago, I provided everybody a printed list. And I said, research these that we're going to bring it forward at the July 26th meeting. And at the top of my town administration report is the link back to the same thing you have a printed copy of. So it was provided a couple of meetings ago, all of the details, maps and lots, what was owed at the time of taking. And I can go to the town's website and show you where it is. And this is what you had a printed copy of. And so you could see the listing, the map and lot, the address, assessed value, former owners, size, the recommendations from the lands committee. I added some additional notes here. And so they reviewed 24, so there's 24 lots here, but only I believe 12 were recommended for sale and six were recommended to transfer to other agencies. And so I apologize, but the information wasn't.
I'll be honest, I just don't remember what's happened since the June 14th meeting. And I, I do not remember it, but I have no doubt that you provided it. So how does everyone feel after discussion on this? Do we want to postpone a vote on it? Do you want to move forward with it?
I for one would like to postpone.
I'll second.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion then.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chair, before there's a vote. Yep. So it's a very lengthy process of notifying a butter's requesting sale. And so, you know, we prescribed a very specific schedule. I believe that the lands committee and myself provided the select board ample advance notice to be prepared for a decision. In over a month in advance, I asked the select board to be prepared for a decision, asked for comments. And I'm discouraged that the board's not prepared to make a decision because it's going to delay the process and create undue work for the town lands committee and staff if this pushes out farther beyond the end of the year. So I understand the town's position, but it felt necessary to share my.
So we have a motion. I'll second the motion. Roll call vote.
Yeah, no.
Enter a guy. Bailey, aye.
Supposed to move.
Yeah, aye.
All right.
I, I move forth recommendations of the town lands committee convention, our conservation commission, our heads, by offering 12 properties to a butter's, transferring six properties to other agencies.
Select person air second sit.
We have a second.
Select person air second sit.
Air, aye.
Enter a guy.
Bailey, no. Supposed to.
Now, no.
Thank you. I think you guys made a poor decision, but that is my personal opinion on it.
Mine too.
Can I clarify, yeah?
You can clarify.
We sort of like I'm into like I'll clarify everything.
I'll put my name on it.
Move the agenda.
That's nice. Cost of living adjustment methodology. My comment was the last meeting that I needed to go review it. And I'll be candid, I have not gotten to reviewing that. I've had a lot going on. And I have not had a chance to do it. So I'm asking if the board would consider pushing it off.
I'll second.
Bailey, aye.
No, he simply, Andy's making a motion to postpone.
I understand, but they postponed it.
I appreciate you asking. No, I will just note that select person air, you had indicated that you had some questions you'd like to ask and have any questions for me. And I'm happy to review them and provide additional information at the first meeting in August.
I slide into. I went to a truck strat show and I'm going to stay on there.
Okay, so, so we have a motion to postpone. So we have a second. I was asking the board, I was pulling the board for feedback. Select person air said he seconded it. You said you supported it. Mr. Bailey supports it. Mr. Main Tripper. So I'll make the motion to postpone the cost of living adjustment methodology until the next meet for the next meeting, which is the sixth of August. It's at the, the, August 9th, 9th of August. Thank you. Oh, yeah, right in front of my face. Thank you. So seconded by select person air, roll call vote.
Air, aye.
Enter a guy. Bailey, aye.
Yeah, aye. All right. Select board appointments to board procedure. It was included in the packet provided by Connor.
If you'd like, Mr. Chair. Sure. Okay. So this is in response to the feedback the board had the last meeting. I spent a fair amount of time putting this procedure together, which would formalize the process that the board would take when considering appointments. So it's something that wasn't contemplated significantly in the select board rules of procedure previously. And so basically it establishes the process that the board was looking to follow anyways. Not looking for a decision on this tonight, just looking for feedback changes you'd like integrated for future consideration. So the first part of procedure simply lists the role of the select board, the statutory provisions, providing those responsibilities, involvement of staff and helping to fill positions, resignations, term expirations, et cetera. And then the application process, which I felt like was really on point to what the select board was looking for. Asking new appointments to familiarize themselves with the board's purpose, work in charge, contact the chair, attend at least one meeting, review the legal responsibilities, et cetera. And the next two portions that are additional. First in your packet, you have an updated application for appointment, which would be consistent with the recommended procedure. Updates to questions, make sure that they're a registered voter, what they're looking for, if they've attended a meeting. And finally, this is actually a recommendation that I've been working on from the town's liability insurance carrier. It's a volunteer service statement and agreement. Essentially formalizes the role of volunteers in town by establishing a, an agreement, allows us to what's called roster our volunteers. So we have record of them. Should anything go wrong, we have a record of their volunteer service, what their purpose was, et cetera. So I felt like this was a good opportunity to get that across the finish line and include it as part of the procedure. So happy to answer any questions and more importantly, take any feedback to an additional review at a meeting of the select board choice.
My general feedback was I like it. I think it looks good. One piece that I would recommend is this in all forms that we put an actual file path as to where the document will be found and a revision date. That way we know if we're using the most current revision of the document.
Right. Yes, absolutely. And it lives on the page. Overall, I thought that the clarification of rules and applications and employment in the process was thorough and very complete. I'll hear feedback from the board.
We just turn around and make a, 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 that. It was in our rules and stuff pretty much sticks to it. And as I read through it, I didn't find any reason to find things that I need to have changed.
Any other comment here? I mean, yeah, go ahead. I was just going to say if there's no recommendations, you're certainly welcome to approve it tonight, but that's up to you.
Motion board approve.
Pending, pending changes as noted.
There's no, please.
I'll second.
Air, aye.
Enter a guy. Bailey, aye. Supposed to.
Aye.
A piece of work.
South Malago Drainage Engineering Report. Connor, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, so this is a tough one and, and it's clear why the town has, why this is, the issue has gone on so long. That's south of Malago. There's a, the road isn't laid out. We don't know exactly where the road is. There's a lot of drainage issues. We're committed to making the improvements. The engineer we selected last year, Bright Angle Engineering, is looking to get started. We've been going back and forth with the surveyor on the scope of getting the survey done. Unfortunately, because there isn't any good survey in that whole stretch of South Malago, the survey is more costly than we anticipated. We've gone back and forth, actually talked to the town's attorney to say, hey, look, is it really this important? You know, the road is there. It's a town road. We know it's a town road. And she said, listen, you know, you're going to save yourself a lot of headaches by getting this done now. So all recommendations are that we should proceed with this surveying. $20,000 of survey just on Malago. And so as much as, as I and Mark, the engineer, surveyors, attorney, would like not to have to do this, all signs point to we really should do this. I looked at the budget numbers, where we are, what we have available. I feel we have the capacity that we can do that this year. It will allow us to proceed with the drainage, try to stay somewhat on schedule with the improvements in Malago. I don't love it, I'll be honest, but I do think it's something we need to get done. And I'm asking for the board to, to consider agreeing with me, but I'm happy to hear your feedback as well.
Good. Select person air.
I personally spent $8,000 on my right. Survey, so it's more, the same one time to add the co-op, so they belong to you. Researchers. It's just crazy. They want each country with three times. That was on crazy.
I just got to spending, it exists $3,000. It's going to have my profits. It's not a cheap process.
So are, are we looking to expend this from the roads account? It's in there. The line is the properly budgeted highway consultants account. And I'll be honest, it's possible that we overspend that a little bit. But like I said, I looked at the budget. We have room in the highway department, bunch of otherwise. So, but yeah, it'd be the highway consultants line to balance of $35,000.
Oh, yeah.
We'll be paying the, we'll be paying the right angle engineering out of that account also. But that engineering will span two years. So the full, I think, what did I say it was 19 to 25, it won't be coming out this year. So I think we have room. And like I said, I don't love it, but I, all signs point to what's on the town.
Select person Secoshen.
There is no further comment. I would like to make a motion.
So motion.
I would like to make a motion to accept the Norway Plains South Malago survey scope with up to $20,000 from the properly budgeted highway consultants account.
Second. Roll call vote.
Air, aye.
Enter a guy.
Bailey, aye.
Supposed to.
Yeah, aye. Thank you. It will be great to get that done for us in Malago.
Moving into new business, second quarter financial, financial analysis. Connor, if you would like to talk about the current state of our financials.
Yeah, I would say that we're, we remain in a strong financial position. The highlights, if you leave with anything, we're 50% through the budget as per this analysis to the end of June. We've spent 42% of our approved appropriations and we've collected 60% of our estimated revenue. So we're on the right side of history for both those numbers, which is in large part due to hard work from the select board, department heads, all the way down through. And I think it's indicative of the town maintaining a strong, town residents maintaining a relatively strong financial position. We have the lowest delinquency numbers in over a decade on our tax collection. We have the fewest properties up for beating that we've had in years. And we've obviously collected a fair amount of revenue that we've anticipated. I won't go into too much more detail, except to show the budget stuff's pretty vanilla. There's some stuff we pay upfront first half of the year, some stuff we pay at the end of the year. All works out, like I said, we're 42%. And on the revenue side, one thing I'll call your attention to, it's on the last page, you see that graph, the building permit fees. So we, we calculated, when, when we asked the select board to update the fees at the end of last year, we calculated based on a five-year average of permits, of what we would anticipate. The, the spike in our percent collection, we factored in the increase into our estimated revenue. We have had so much activity through that building office through the first half of this year. It's really been remarkable. The water credit and to our building inspector, John Hawkins, our deputy building inspector, John Abbott, for the work that they've done to, to be responsive to the demand. And I think, like I said earlier, I think that's another indicator of the financial health of the residents in town. That there's so much growth, so much. And you'll remember, we, we added tens of millions of dollars of value just last year in new construction and additions. Last point I'll note is that you'll see this as a three-year look back. That was a request of the budget committee to, to try to show trends a little bit better. So I'll maintain that model going forward with the financial analysis that I provide. Is that the backup expenditures and revenue is attached to my report. I didn't print copies because, you know, the gate's purpose of giving you a summary, but they're available electronically if you'd like. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I would just like to make a comment that, that what, what is part of what helps drive the desirability of Barrington is the fact that department heads and the board and the work you performed, as well as others before us in making sure that we keep Barrington's tax rate as reasonably low as possible, so that we are one of the lowest in the area with the option of school choice, which makes Barrington so much more desirable than many other meetings around us.
17% the other week.
Well, and to that point.
Yes, I understand.
A, a little finger post, if you will. I, I anticipate a tax rate setting this October. I anticipate Barrington's tax rate will be below $20. And that's because values are rising, but, but the tax rate drops proportionally to the value increase until, before you take into account increases, which there will be some increases, but I still anticipate that our tax rate will be below $20, which will be remarkable for our area.
I, I have always said that my, my objective was that I felt Barrington should have a tax rate in of $19,000. And we're on track for that. And the reason we're on track for it is because people like the folks sitting behind us, which no one can see, but are our police chief, our fire chief and Mark Moore, who's not here, but has our highway department, yes, and our deputy chief. But Chief Joy does the budget stuff. But anyway, tho- those folks are, you're talking three of the biggest budgets in town and they work diligently to provide a budget that is reasonable for the town, affordable for the town, and helps drive us to the point where Barrington continues to move in that direction. Through good fiscal responsibility, we can keep that trajectory going and Barrington continues to be a valuable place where we have low taxes, high property values and a wonderful place to be. So, thank you. And just as I talk about all of this, police department party imposition. Hard time slash.
I asked a mayor to reverse those two items. If we presented in order of preference.
Police detective reclassification being the first item. Yes, sir.
The agenda's already been reviewed and approved. Come on, come on up and.
We will, we will entertain your request to flip flop the two items.
And so you can sit here and remember that the.
I brought your chair. That floor is yours, Chief Joy.
You folks have material in front of you. I don't know that I have anything else. You folks have material in front of you. Uh I don't know that I have anything else to present, except what it gives me to pack it. Uh the one addition I will make to that, a financial standpoint, which I did not add into this, uh anybody that would be eligible for this shift of grade would also be somebody that is eligible for the master patrolman status this year. So that stipend would also play a role. They obviously wouldn't be eligible for the master patrolman stipend if they're
So how many employees do we have eligible to meet this criteria?
Board's own.
Select person there.
Uh I commented on both of them. He made a good speech for our budget asset. Uh I don't feel, why do we need to vote on this? The taxpayers approved the budget. You have a budget. You have money. And then if even if you go over a line item, you can come to us. That's why I'm saying I'd rather see what we spend than we know is a thing and creating all these stuff messes up.
You realize, select person there, we flipped to the agenda and we're talking about the police detective reclassifications talked before.
I'm saying both of them. So that's what I'm saying.
It's a good question, select person there. So the reason that the detective grade changes before the board is because the select board has retained the authority to grade positions. So uh myself and other supervisors like Chief Joy uh perform the supervisory and and staff uh duties, responsibilities that's laid out in our job descriptions. In this case, um what Chief Joy and and I fully support would like to do in the police department, bring the detective position back into a position uh more of a more responsible position like it was previously uh with Lieutenant Banyan uh requires a regrading, which is an action of the board. Uh so I understand that your point, it's within the approved budget. We don't anticipate a budget impact, uh but the regrading requires actually.
Thank you. Select person Bailey and select person Mantra.
Thank you. So this position would be uh talked about September, January. So it was for next year, you put it in the next year's budget.
It's him. I'm sorry.
No.
No. It's a great point, yes. And the answer is yes. And to the point that I was just making, just like person there, uh we expect the budget impact next year uh to to be uh non-existent as far as the increase due to this change.
I was just, I just, I'm only talking about this.
But it will be specifically budgeted at a grade ten if the board supports it.
Select person Mantra.
I believe we regrade police detective position grade eight.
I'm not done with discussion yet, so. My, well, we've been having discussion. So I guess my question or conversation on this is um being we have a union agreement, where does that align into this discussion? Because I believe there's a component that
Yes, that that has been thought about and thought as well. Uh one of the rights that we have maintained as administration is promotions and assignments, and this certainly falls into that category. Uh so we have no union issues with this. It's a regrading. It's an assignment to that detective motion, for instance. Uh so we have no problems.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't think there would be.
And again, you're looking at moving one of our staff.
It's a great point, though, and it's something that the chief and I discussed, uh because a lot of union contracts would prevent something like this being on track. Any changes um for fear of them being changes in the other direction. Uh but chiefs and administrators before both George and I have done a good job maintaining management rights in contract.
Need further discussion?
What? My turn.
Go ahead.
We're done with discussion.
Yeah, make a motion is what he was referring to.
I'm sorry. I followed it. Make make a motion to regrade the police detective position grade eight, grade ten.
Bailey with the second. Select person Bailey.
Please, I would like to. Thank you.
Roll call though.
Yeah, no, I'll state my reason. I want in the minutes, it's all these upgrades, something that they're, and they sounds good. It will affect the budget, and we're taking away the taxpayers. Right, they vote on their budgets. I feel it's not my job to vote for every taxpayer. Thank you.
Fairly high.
Fairly high.
Yeah, bye.
Could I address that for the record, please? Uh the numbers are clearly spelled out in the presentation that I gave you, gentlemen. Uh this is a lesser cost to us, so there is probably going to be no budget impact now or next year. Uh savings of about a dollar an hour because we're taking an employee that left who was a high step in grade eight and they're being replaced with a low level of grade ten as a savings because of the fact that we lost experience person.
Theoretically, yes, I would agree with you on that. The counterpoint to that is if you actually look at the compounded effect over the long time and at the rate from one rate to the other, it creates a
We're a long way from that.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, if you look at it, that that is I is I used to deal a lot of this with different employee labor.
Certainly, the grade ten will outstrip the grade eight eventually.
Yep.
And I hope to maintain staff that long, so that happens.
Yep, and it always, uh you know, it's a, it's a battle of inches, not a, and and miles, not a battle of the quick climb. All right, very good. Next one, uh the um part-time slash per diem position.
All right. Easier sale on this one, I believe, gentlemen, which is why my presentation is much shorter. Uh currently, I was approached by an experienced uh local officer, whom both supervisory staff and control staff trust. I've worked side by side with him as a great officer, is not looking to move agencies. He's very content where he is, and I don't hate him. Uh what he is looking for is a little bit of extra work, a little bit of extra experience, a little bit of extra call on him. He spoke to his chief before he ever came to me, uh so this isn't a big cut in the dark of night. This helps us plug some gaps. Um quite frankly, the last several weeks, I've had overtime shifts that almost not fill. I was working until we were sitting back there, filling an overtime shift for Wednesday night, which would have left us vacant or stung. We are down currently two guys that aren't even here, folks, staff. Officer Resniczek is still in the academy. We're still trying to fill one oh one spot, and currently I have one officer way on orders. So that takes us to seventy-five percent of staff right off the bat. Uh we have some communication or agreement, which is what happened last week. We're working at fifty percent capacity. This allows me to plug some of those holes. It also allows me to do it, quite frankly, cheaper than filling it with overtime. Uh if I can go to the well and hit this employee for twenty-something dollars an hour to fill a ship versus thirty-five dollars an hour, that doesn't do anything to benefit the town.
If I could, Mr. Chair, and and the chief hit it at the end, uh I was thrilled when the chief presented me with this idea because it's very creative thinking. I think it hits to Chair Knapp's point that he brought up earlier about the creative thinking where department heads. This is a great opportunity for now in the future to continue this model and allow, you know, unfortunately, something we experienced in the police department is attrition and and folks moving on, and we've gone a long stretch of time having a vacancy or two overlapping. And it's a brilliant idea in order to, like the chief hit on at the end, uh to fill the ship with somebody at straight time instead of overtime uh and have that as, you know, as long as somebody like this gentleman that approaches the town is available to have somebody there, uh is a terrific idea. So as I said in my report, I fully support a helpful board response.
So is your recommendation, because it says part-time slash per diem, would it not just be better to set it as per diem?
We have never had a per diem employee in the police department before, so I spoke in terms that I was familiar with, part-time. Uh T M Kai read it per diem, I get that, and that's certainly a discussion open to having. And I, again, I work within my comfort zone. My comfort zone is part-time. Uh certainly, and I don't think this gentleman would care one way or the other.
Yeah, well, the benefits I know from the private sector at least is with per diem, it gives you the flexibility where uh you're you're not limited to hiring someone on as one person. You could have several per diem employees who can fill multiple roles and capacity.
Yeah, it's a good point. I I guess I could have elaborated on it more in in my town administrator report. So the town's personnel policy, it it uh our job classifications are uh the exact same as the private sector, and so we don't have the same benefits. The reason I put per diem in there is because really that's what in essence it is, but the job classification that they'd be under our personnel policy would be part-time. Uh so I want to make that immediately clear. They'd be a part-time employee, but the for scheduling and purposes like that, they would essentially be a per diem employee. So in the private sector, maybe you'd call it an irregular part-time employee instead of a regular part-time employee. Uh so nuanced differences.
Would it make sense to make a per diem job classification because it then creates um a wider berth and flexibility for not only the chief but for anyone else? Because then at that point, they're functioning in a truly in a per diem role as opposed to a part-time employee role?
I guess what I would ask is because our personnel policy, the the job classifications, the part-time job classification is afforded all of the benefits of a per diem classification, they're, you know, they're one of the same in in our personnel plan. So we certainly could, but quite frankly, I don't see the need to uh, I don't see the benefit in differentiating because they're essentially covered under the same. So if there's a a benefit that I'm not thinking of, you know, we certainly could, but uh I think we have uh the ability to uh to do it with the classifications that already exist.
Then my recommendation would be in the job classification to add per diem note to it, because what I see happening is you end up scope creeping away from that, and you say, oh, we we brought him in under the the part-time end when our intent was that they're per diem and his boards changed. That ends up getting missed. It gets forgotten. It changes with it.
So yeah, it's an excellent point, and I think um I think maybe a good way to do that is in the board's approval of this model um indicating that the board doesn't intend to add uh regular hours, regular shift hours. Uh because I think that's your point. You don't want in, you know, in two years, if George and I went to a different board and said, look, we have two part-time positions. We need to budget for two part-time hours. Uh and so I think that's a fair uh concern to be put into the record.
Yeah, yeah, for the select person there.
Again, so but basically, you have money in your budget to do that. That's all I'm saying. I want to give that per diem one of your call, but then.
What I'm proposing, I'm proposing allows him the flexibility
Right.
to spend his money and fill his shifts
Right.
as needed and in a much easier way than classifying it as a part-time. That's why I was making the recommendation of just making it as
If you go all the way.
In in this scenario, though, it is, it's a, it's a new hire. So you gentlemen retain authority to hire or fire, which I cannot act.
Yeah, and I guess what I would say, and George and I talked about this a little bit, my opinion was that I would, I felt like the board would be open to this idea. And I feel like because it's a change of practice, it's a good exercise to have the board consider it. Uh it's not technically a new position because we're not adding hours. So I think an argument could be made that between George and I, as authority, we could have done this. Uh that's what select person there is making, but whenever I have a question, I always err on the side of bringing it before the board because I think it's good for the community, good for transparency. Uh so we certainly hope to have what's more.
Yeah, I don't think I see anything wrong with this, and it's fulfilling our needs, what we need to do to take care of, you know, win what's important now. So I would like to make a motion if there's no further discussion from the board.
Oh, Andy, should we, Andy should make it. Is should, should we consider a sunset of the motion or not?
Uh I'm not so worried about sunsetting it. It's just um I would make the motion to uh accept the addition of the part of the per diem, part-time slash per diem position with the emphasis on it that this is designed not as an extra headcount, but as a per diem role.
Thank you.
Really, but all right, I would like to second that.
There I.
Fairly high.
Supposed to tap on.
And just for clarification, I think this speaks to your point, but Chair Knapp, um if if the town had the opportunity to bring more than one person on in a role like this, the board would be open to that. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, well, then he has money within his budget. It's not a godsend.
Right.
Not gonna get shot with budget.
And I'm not saying that we want to do that. There is some cost, you know, we have uniforms, badges.
Uniforms, too.
Yeah.
Uh there are some other costs, but I, we're, again, you should be able to stay within our minds.
Great, thank you.
But if you go all the way, you go all the
And I've got some mouthware I've got in this chair, so I'm not going to go over it, I promise you.
Thank you. All right, twenty twenty-one tax deed-ing. Okay, so just real quick on this, again, not looking for any board action. Uh this is the process we undertook last year. It felt like it worked well. Uh so we're following the same timeline and schedule. So the this is a a process that has very specific timelines based on notices. Uh and and we absolutely cannot deviate from this. We have one opportunity a year to deed property. And so uh what I'm doing tonight is the tax collector and I have provided you a list of the properties that are currently eligible for deed-ing. Uh and so the, at the next meeting, the, at the August ninth meeting, uh our hope is that the board uh will have a new list, an updated list based on people that have paid. Our hope is that the board will be uh prepared to issue any deed waivers that they're going to issue at the August ninth meeting. What that allows us to do is let the property owners that don't have a deed waiver know that on August twenty-sixth, their property will be deeded. So uh as with every year, there's a couple of properties that the town uh SCAP is requesting deed waivers for. Uh two for contamination, uh it'd be for Joyce to deed those properties, uh one that's in bankruptcy, uh and then another one that is a uh a hardship which will provide materials on. And so so uh happy to answer any questions tonight, but more specifically, if anybody on the board needs additional information about any of these properties prior to being able to make a decision, uh please request that prior to Wednesday of the next meeting. Um so we can provide that information and be prepared to make a decision on September or on August ninth. I will add a little footnote. We have, we do have a meeting scheduled for August twenty-third. So if there is an emergency, we need to, we need to address something last minute, uh we do have the opportunity of August twenty-third. Uh but our hope is to have it uh for the August ninth meeting. Any questions tonight?
No.
Uh so again, this is all, this is public record. This is taxes owed. Um to be eligible for tax deed-ing, uh property has to be delinquent on taxes for more than three years. Um it's not something that that happens overnight. And if board members or anybody in the community has questions about the process, I'm happy to take your call, the town hall, uh any, any, any business.
Last item I have under new business is reverting back to item D from the consent agenda, which was around the twenty twenty-two Barrington calendar, holiday calendar. Select person there, you wanted to discuss it.
Yeah, all these folk holidays, like the day after Thanksgiving, is that a scheduled pay? Everyone gets it, or does it, if you're scheduled to work that day?
It's a great question. Yeah, I'm happy to answer it. So the personnel policy, uh when it contemplates holidays, you're only eligible for the holiday if you're scheduled to work. Um so for example, there's a few of these uh on Fridays, the day after Thanksgiving is a good example, Veterans Day this year, New Year's Day, Christmas, the floating holiday. So anybody who's not scheduled to work on a Friday would not receive holiday pay.
All right, it's all my question.
The only exception to that um is in the police and fire department. So uh they, their holiday pay is a proration of the twelve holidays throughout the year. Uh and if they're scheduled to work, they have to work. Uh and so in the uh police department, they receive two payments of holiday pay. Uh six, six holidays, six holidays, they gets May and December, June and December. And the fire department receives one point eight four hours of additional pay uh each week for their holidays. So those are the only exceptions, select person.
Select person Bailey.
Thank you very much.
Connor.
I missed the joke.
So Madam Bailey was
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I deserve that. Sorry about that. I really I'm working for mine, but anyway.
Thanks, Bob, yeah.
Uh I have a question for the uh town administrator. So the twenty on the twenty-fourth of December, that is considered the floating holiday for the twenty-fifth. But if they don't work on the, on the twenty-fourth, because the twenty-fifth's on a Saturday, and you said that if they didn't work the day before, you didn't get the pay, well, is that an exclusion there? Am I reading something in that shouldn't be there or what? Because
So Christmas is on a Friday. Most town employees have Fridays off. So if they don't work Friday, do they get paid for Saturday?
No.
Christmas is on Saturday.
Oh, you're talking this current year.
This current year. So that's why I was asking that question. I mean, my recollection is, is that if if they, they don't work on Friday, but I don't think we should penalize them. We're not paying for that because of the way you just said it. That's why I was questioning it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I understand your question and certainly the board is, um, has the ability to change the policy. The policy as it's, as it's written right now only provides holiday pay for non-police and fire employees on days that they're regularly scheduled to work. So if, if Christmas is observed on a Friday per, um, the federal government holiday schedule and you're not scheduled to work on a Friday, you do not receive holiday pay. Uh, with, with, uh, Christmas specifically, the town's personnel policy affords a, uh, floating holiday, which is, uh, either before Christmas or after Christmas. Uh, in the case of twenty twenty-two, for example, the floating holiday is on, observed on the twenty-third, which if you don't schedule on Friday, you wouldn't receive payment for that. But the Christmas day observed is the twenty-sixth, which you would receive holiday pay for if you're scheduled to work on Monday. But we have part-time employees that aren't scheduled to work on Monday.
Uh, I, I don't want to go there. I, I want, I'm just asking.
If you're not scheduled to work, if you're not scheduled to work, you do not receive holiday pay, that the town's policy as it stands, would you be interested in, in amending that policy?
I, 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 I know you're, I, 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 this is Christmas though. I, I look at, that's why I asked the question because on the, the, Christmas is on Saturday and then their floating holiday would be on Friday. So this, because that's their floating holiday, that, that constitutes being paid. So there's no reason why they shouldn't be. That's, that, that's the way I read it and I.
Well, that, we could look at half Christmas too, that was July.
I think you're setting a bad precedent by changing the process on one specific date.
Um. Point order, I, I, about identifying a certain holiday too much. I think we're identifying, naming it too much personally.
Not everybody celebrates Christmas on August, so.
Right.
We also have a little bit of that under the thing.
Understood my question was asked, thank you. I mean, answered, excuse me. Am I happy with it? No, but it was answered. Thank you very much. Come on.
Well, you should have hear, you should have heard what I suggested to Andy. I told Andy that he should suggest that you self-fund the Christmas holiday if he was aware of it.
I think you should pick up half Christmas in July. That would be a nice.
Tax write-off.
Point of order, we're getting way out of track here. Can I, may I have a, do I have a motion to accept the, the meeting calendar as discussed here in its current state?
I'll make that one as soon as I raise it.
Twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a motion from select person air, select person, a second from select person Mantrick? Can I have a roll call?
There I.
Now I. Whew, got through that one. All right. Select board member reports and concerns, select person air.
Um, conservation, we went over these plans, except the town plans. Cancelled that meeting because it needs research area. That's gonna be a fun one, boys.
Woo-hoo.
Um, a lot of work that one. Um, and that's it. Hey, hold on. We have building committee there, we're down on, there's no means of calling as much updates for us.
Good. Would you like me to provide those updates now?
Oh, what?
Would you like me to provide those updates now?
No, you'll share them with us. We've got a piece meal.
Well, then it's under your report and you're talking about the building. Would you like them to be shared?
Well, I don't remember. I get a memory as, I, I read the emails though.
Um, I think the old, so, um, probably what select person air is mentioning, which I'm happy to mention publicly, I informed the board. Uh, we have an opportunity and will likely start, uh, the clearing of the town hall lot, if not this week, next week. Um, you, you remember at the last meeting, I let the board know that the planning board supported, um, breaking off the lot. Uh, we're reviewing the draft deed with developer now. Um, the town forester, Tim Nolan, um, I've been corresponding with him frequently regarding the timber harvest on the Goodwill property. Um, and I said, well, if we're bringing a big logging operation to town, um, and, you know, it's hard to get anybody to do anything right now scheduling wise, would it be worthwhile asking if they'd be willing to look at the town hall lot while they're in town? Uh, and what I asked because the forester said it is really hard to get people to clear lots, especially three acres. Uh, and so it, it seems like the, uh, logging company will be able to stop by the town hall lot on their way into town. They'll be about one and a half months on the Goodwill property, so they'll be down there a while. Uh, but yeah, so the, the big reason I wanted to let the board know is because this is going to be the first, um, visual progress towards the town hall. Uh, so I, I certainly hope that we'll have some resident interest. Um, I hope that interest will facilitate more residents learning about the one and a half million dollars that we stand um, to get as direct federal funding. I think it's really promising. I, I got a call from Congressman Pappas himself, letting, letting me know that the House was voting on and approving that direct federal funding. Uh, I feel bad for, you know, his assistant that had a call with communities there. Uh, didn't make it past the appropriations committee. Uh, so yeah, I hope that more residents will learn about that, the positive news that goes along with it. Uh, and we might, might start to see some progress. So that is the update on town.
Does that sound a lot better than me?
It's wonderful.
Select person Mantrick.
Uh, the, uh, school board had a, a workshop, which, uh, specifically directed at their teaching stuff. So then they're going to have another administrative workshop next Tuesday. Uh, this is a different setup, it's a four-hour thing, I'll try to, some of that. And their next regular meeting is on the thirteenth, probably will not make that. Uh, did talk, talked to some folks at the transfer station, which again, there's been no meeting or committee that they're working on. A new film, exercise. If we can get more plastic film. And the, uh, ABC will have an organization meeting on the second, second.
Select person Bailey?
Thank you. There was only one meeting and CPA were paving for them and they turned it down. And then the, uh, tomorrow night is the library that was rescheduled from last week. So that was rescheduled. That's all I have.
Select person Secotion.
Okay, down at the rec department, they now have an evening weekend supervisor. Um, so they're hoping to open the adult drop-in programs again at, beginning of the school year. And they have been focusing on running camps, uh, facilitating ongoing rec projects. Uh, they have a straight shade structure project they're doing, also the floors and bleachers are looking at the dressing as well.
Planning board met last week. Uh, one of the items was the subdivision of the town hall lot off so that that could proceed forward. The other, um, two items were the, um, building permits that we discussed earlier this evening. And probably the most meaningful review was, um, the review of the plans by dump development group for up behind the Christmas stuff. If anyone's interested, I brought the plans with me. If you would like to see them, there's a small, you know, they, they had to cut down all the trees behind Christmas stuff that made these packets.
Yes.
It is very thorough, very complete. It was a very productive and long discussion around it. If anyone's interested in it. That is all that I have. Thank you.
Final public comment. For participating virtually, you can raise your hand to let us know you'd like to speak. Uh, if you're on the phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself. You can also enter a chat into the comment box, uh, and just wait for the chair to, uh, call on you before you start speaking. And, and for the audience members here, if you'd like to make public comment, you may step up to the laptop and the town administrator help you turn the camera on. I see that they're coming through virtually.
Give it five more seconds.
I had a clock for quick to one.
All right, I will close public comment. We have a non-public session for personnel reputation and legal that we will be entering into. So I'm looking for a motion to go into non-public.
So I would like to make it, oh, a motion to enter non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash eight-three-two for the purposes of personnel reputation and legal.
Second.
There I.
Man for high.
Bailey, uh, Secotion.
Now I, and if, when we enter, um, we will come out and if need be, we will make any necessary announcements or notifications.
Everyone.
Mr. Chair, welcome back to the public section of our meeting. We have just returned from non-public. I would like to make a motion to seal the minutes of non-public for the purposes of legal.
Definitely.
Definitely. I have a second from select person Mantra. Will call vote.
Aye.
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 And I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Will call vote.
Aye.
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 Now bye. Everyone have a good evening and thank you for your commitment to the town.